Okay, it's four o'clock and we have a quorum. I will call this day's session of the Salina City Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 15th to order. Our first agenda item today are the approval of the summary minutes of the December 18th meeting. Is there, are there comments or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we'll move on to the public hearing items. Public hearing item number one, application Z1224. Oh, I'm, gotta move. I got the wrong thing here, don't I? Sorry, I'm backing up. Application M12-13 filed by the Ruth Yost Trust, number one, requesting an amendment of the future land use map of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan for a change. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, those who were in attendance and were not in attendance at our previous meeting, you had a chance to go through the minutes because there was a very good and informative discussion about the long-range vision for this area and the comprehensive plan. And the two thoughts on that is that, one, there was an extensive period of time and focus groups and a lot of work that went into developing the comprehensive plan and the future land use map and that the planning horizon that we're trying to deal with is outward of 20 years to 30 years' time. So, when you're talking about the comprehensive plan, you're talking about a longer-term horizon and your vision for how a currently undeveloped or underdeveloped area would be in the future. That being said, comprehensive plans are not designed to be locked into stone and never changed, it's just that if they are changed, there should be thought and deliberation that goes into that. So, John, I'm gonna start and ask you to put up the map for the urban service area, which we have here. Go back. This is in your packets, but this is the, if you're looking at the long-range growth of the community in a 20-plus-year timeframe, and you see that the predominantly yellow areas are future residential. This limey green area is predominantly floodway and is a conservation area, unlikely to develop. The purple areas are employment centers, which is at its core industrial, but also includes some institutional uses such as the airport, Kansas State, University of Salina, some areas out on Schilling Road like where Kennedy &amp; Co. and the Sunflower Bank are located. And our, this is meaning, this is the area that the city will grow out to, and we are in a primary service area because we're talking about an area that already has water and sewer extended to it and a paved street, so infrastructure is not the issue. The issue is what uses should take advantage of and be able to use that infrastructure. And so, this pink area represents pretty much the South Ninth Street corridor, and you put in your packets information about the South Ninth Street corridor overlay district. Some examples of development that is within that overlay would be the Long MacArthur and Marshall Motors Ford dealerships, as well as the Sleep Inn, which is tucked right down here at the very south end of that commercial corridor. So, the area that we are discussing is right here, and you can see that to the east of Dry Creek, between there and Interstate 135 is shown as a future commercial area with all this to the remaining side as being employment center. So, this is the northwest quadrant of the interchange, shown as employment center, northeast quadrant, shown as future commercial, southeast, shown as future commercial, southwest, shown as future commercial, and in this case, highway commercial. And so, we have outlined for you in the report that in commercial areas, the primary uses are retail and service, office, and some civic and institutional uses. And the main zoning districts are C3, shopping center, C5, service commercial, C6, heavy commercial, and C7, which is highway commercial. The purple employment areas, the primary uses are light industrial and warehousing, manufacturing and processing, educational facilities and campuses, the airport, and rail and support services with secondary uses being office and retail and service. In the primary zoning districts there are primarily industrial as well as planned development district. And so, what the comprehensive plan says, John, if you could go to the Economic Development Hubs map. One of the dilemmas in this particular case, and the maps are not intended to have just precise boundaries, which is why we get to have these discussions, but the plan indicates that the airport area is a major employment, education, training hub for Salina, will continue to be so in the future. The unique synergy of these activities offers a competitive opportunity for Salina by offering businesses in the airport area access to nearby training and educational facilities. Salina should build on the synergy of education and training, employment, and transportation uses in this area. Manufacturing, warehousing, light industrial, and large-scale general businesses should be encouraged to locate in the airport area. And so, one of the things that we are discussing on this first item is whether you see as a commission, this area in question is being more closely associated with the airport employment area or more and closely associated with the South Ninth Street retail corridor. And so, one thing we indicated there is the origin of the C7 zoning district was that prior planning commissions and city commissions recognized that interstate interchanges are a finite resource. There's only so many of them to go around, there's only so many interstate interchange locations where you can have travel-oriented commercial development that pulls traffic off the interstate, hopefully to obtain services or lodging or other things within the city of Salina. And so, at Ohio and I-70, Ninth and I-70, Crawford and 135, Schilling and 135, we have C7-zoned areas to try to set aside areas for businesses that serve the traveling public such as truck stops, motels, and restaurants. And so, the prior commissions were concerned about the uses, but also maintaining gateways and entryways and what types of businesses were at the new interchange entrances. So, today, we have seven interstate interchanges around Salina, including the Waterwell Road interchange, which is our most recent. And only the Waterwell interchange, the southwest quadrant of Magnolia and I-135, the northwest quadrant of that interchange, and portions of the south side of North Ohio and I-70 are still available for development potential at this time. So, there are challenges on the Crawford and I-135 interchange there with lack of utilities and floodplain and floodway. State Street is almost all floodplain and floodway, and there's certain, a complete lack of utilities there. At Ninth and I-70, we have a great deal of floodway from Mulberry Creek. So, your role in this case is to decide what you think is the most appropriate vision for future development of this area. And is the Yost addition more closely related to South Ninth Street commercial corridor east of I-135 because of the interchange, or is it most closely related to the airport industrial hub area, which is west of Centennial Road? So, part of what you need to look at is that the area is predominantly undeveloped, but if you looked at logical extensions for the airport industrial area coming across Waterwell Road and into this area here with light industrial or warehousing or transportation is likely, but the difference is this area over here does not have sewer service, and this area here has water, sewer, and paved roads. Another map I wanted to show you, John, we have the South Ninth Street corridor map. And so, this, this is a land use plan specifically for the South Ninth Street corridor, and what it is showing is, starting up here, this is the Riffle addition, this is where Lowe's is, this is Riffle addition number two, which is, doesn't have any development at this time. This land has been reclaimed from KDOT. This is Long MacArthur Ford and Marshals. This is vacant presently. This is owned by the Miller Trust and is vacant, but is shown as future commercial. This line is right where the Sleep Inn is, and then it's showing industrial farther south of that line down into Farley Road. So, this is the South Ninth Street corridor. You can see that the Yost addition is not part of that corridor specifically as to this plan, but these commercial designations here apply over here as well. The other map I have, John, is the I-2 and I-3 map. And for those of you who got stuck with black and white packets, I apologize because these maps are a lot easier to see in shading, but this is the Yost addition. We have a sliver of I-2 over here. This is industrial in the airport area. This is all I-2 zoning in the airport area. This is zoning that's over in the Liberty addition, and this is where Bergcamps is located here. And then if you zoom out farther, John, you can see the pattern for the community. But this, this map here shows that our industrial concentrations are in the north along the railroad track area, and then the airport industrial center and on the fringes of the south industrial area. So, you can see that there is a, a pattern there of industrial zoning. This property's in the county, which is why it doesn't show up on our map, but this will just give you a general perspective on the industrial zoning, which is I-2 or I-3 in the vicinity. So, again, we're, we're focused on this area here. And if you'll recall, at our last meeting, there was, there was pretty much a stalemate as to the future direction to go and a lot of discussion. So, the hope was that people would get out and drive and look at the various interchange locations, and we would do a better job of explaining what the ramifications are. We have not identified any additional alternatives that we didn't have at your previous meeting, but your first choice would simply be, say that we, as a commission, want to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan. And so, what that means is that the, the boundaries that are in place here that show this as commercial and, and this remaining area as employment center, that you see this as appropriate to leave as future commercial. The second alternative would be to recommend that the land use map be amended to show all of the Yost addition east of Dry Creek as future employment area, which means that basically you have a clean line, which is the interstate here, and everything west of the interstate is employment center, and it leaves the South Ninth corridor in place, but it says that, that this is different over here and that that should be an employment center. Even if you took that position, the current C7 or planned C7 zoning on the lots in the Yost addition here would not change. What you would be saying is that you would be receptive to considering future requests that are similar to item three today, but whoever came forward with that would have to justify that to you based on the specific proposal. But even if you came in and said, "We see this as a future employment center," other than what is in item three today, this planned C7 would remain in place, and anybody wanting to do anything different than that would have to come in and justify it, but by taking that position, you'd be saying you're at least receptive to additional light industrial or, or similar transportation-type uses. The other option would be to recommend that the future land use map be amended just as it relates to the south 8.77 acres of Lot 1, which is right here, which means that you see that as being different than the other areas, and that you still see that these areas up here are viable areas for future highway commercial development. So, those are still the three alternatives. Alternative one, if you chose that direction, would be consistent with not approving the request in item three. If you chose alternative two or alternative three, you would be indicating that you think that the plan could be amended or modified to support the specific proposal in item three. So, I guess the way staff looks at this is item two is the big-picture, long-range vision for this area, and then item three is specific to the specific proposal for a specific land use on the south 8.77 acres of Lot 1. So, with that, I'd be happy to go back and we can look at other areas, and hopefully you got out to drive and look at the other interchange areas to see how industrial and commercial relate, but, John, if you just want to go to items, map items nine, 10, and 11, and we'll just kind of walk through those. This is Crawford and I-135, and this is the pattern that we have with the interchange right here. You've got hotel-motel use, a travel truck plaza here, and this is predominantly vacant there. You've got restaurants, you've got a travel plaza, and then tucked in behind, you have I-2 zoned properties, including a couple of truck terminals or similar uses in that quadrant. If you want to go to I-70, this, this is the Petro II complex. Just to the west of that, on Diamond Drive and Monarch Road, there's an I-2 zone piece of property, and then this is Grain Belt Supply, which is a manufacturing concern here, and you've got a travel plaza, McDonald's, a motel, and so, you've, you've got a core of highway service-related businesses, but this is developed and this is undeveloped, but you've got commercial right next to the interchange, and then it tapers away to industrial. So, those, those are the things that you have to look at, and I think it, it starts with looking at the South Ninth Street corridor and whether that provides ample opportunity for commercial opportunities at this interchange, and is it, is it really, is it necessary to defend a third interchange as a strictly commercial location, or whether there's room for either all of it or some of it to be a future employment area. With that, I'll be open to any questions about the maps we sent out or this area.
Commissioners, are there any questions of the staff? Mr. Norland, you and I missed the last meeting, so...
Listening carefully.
Is the property west of Dry Creek, how, how large of an industrial area is that? How many acres are you talking about?
This area up here, Mr. Welsh...
West of Dry Creek?
Okay.
You've got it zoned I-2?
Okay. This, this piece here is very small. This piece here is undevelopable. This is not platted or zoned or anything at this time. This is 80 acres. That's owned by Doug Bradley, and that, that is, if the airport industrial center were to expand, it would probably come across like this and perhaps over into this area. But there's 80 acres here. I don't know exactly how big this is. It's, it's probably on the plat in the packet, but it, it's a relatively small area that has a small amount of frontage, and, and it would take some additional utility extensions to, to get there. According to this, it's 10, 10 developable acres. And that, that is not counting this floodplain and it's, it's this sliver here. So, it's, it's not really ideally shaped for much of a large building or concern, but Mr. Welsh may know better. I think this has about 65 acres up in that area that is part of this parcel. And again, this is all shown as employment area, and then it's this niche right here, which is commercial presently, with this and this commercial over here.
And refresh me, the applicant's request is for the entire track, is that correct? And that was voted on in the first vote, and it deadlocked?
The applicant's request is, you, you could hear directly from them what their preference would be between item two or item three. What the difference would mean for them and for you as a commission is if, if you chose item, if you chose alternative three and said, "Well, we could see, because this is a second-tier location and not right at the interchange, we could see that as being, it's adjacent to KDOT, but we think the rest of this should stay commercial." And they were to come back in two years and with another similar prospect, we'd be having this discussion again about whether the commercial area should be retained or become an employment area. If you chose option two, you'd be saying that you don't think the vision of this as a future highway commercial area is that viable, and that you would be receptive to future similar requests anywhere east of Dry Creek. That's, that's the primary difference. So, if, if two year, if you chose option two, and two years from now, there was a request for I-2 zoning for another truck terminal, if option two was your recommendation, we wouldn't have this discussion because the planning commission had already said that your, your vision was as an employment center, not as a highway service commercial center. So, that's the primary difference, and I'll leave it to Mr. Mays and Mr. Ritz to express their preference, but either of those could be a option.
Any other questions of staff?
I just, I just have one, Dean, all the maps up there, it's pretty visible where the water line runs, I believe, but show me where the sewer line runs now. Where does it end? Does it end at Yost or...
The sewer line is very hard to see. It's green, but basically, it ends right here.
Okay.
It runs down here, back this way, and then back up Ninth Street.
Thanks.
And so, this motel here is hooked up to the sewer here. The KDOT facility is hooked up to the sewer here. If this property developed, they would either hook up here most likely or here, but the sewer and water parallel each other. The water goes all the way out to the landfill, the sewer stops right here.
If, to extend the sewer on the other side of Dry Creek, then would that, that be, would that require a lift station?
Yes.
Ah.
And when we looked at the, that most likely here, that might be doable, but when you get over into here, then your choices are some form of lift station, come back here, or some form to go over to where the Vortex plant is over on the other side. It's, it's almost equidistant.
Any other remarks or questions?
Just so I'm clear, having not been here before, Dean, for item number, alternative one, does, this may be a stupid question, but does that allow the truck center to go in even if we opted to retain the current commercial employment boundaries?
One of the reasons for the order of this is that when somebody is requesting a rezoning, one of the findings that the commission needs to make is that what they're requesting is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So, the order of things is, is to change the comprehensive plan first, or at least have that discussion, and if it, if you were to choose alternative one, that would be an indication that changing C7 to I-2 is not defensible.
Yeah, okay.
If we've exhausted the questions of staff, we'll move to the applicant. Would the applicant like to address the commission? Your name, please, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th. I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to come back and revisit this with you and those of you that weren't here. Applicant is requesting option number two. While I think Dean's, our thought on, on the idea is that although it's all C7 today, we've got a current user that would be, that requires I-2 to the south half of that Lot 1, we see it as that the, that this body doesn't give up any authority in the ability for us to come back and, and present another user because we would still have to rezone it. It's not necessarily saying that, yes, we're, I guess, you would be saying we'd be open to I-2, doesn't mean you're going to grant I-2 in that location. It may be such a thing that we come back with a user in, in Lot 2, Block 2, across the road, immediately across the road from the requested area. Our feeling is by going in and designating it all employment area, it just simply alleviates this step, and so it's not a two-step process in the future. You still have full authority. Frankly, we're not asking for any other zoning change other than the requested area be, going to I-2. We would like to leave the interchange at C7 and the rest of the property at C7 because we don't, we, we can't tell you today what that is, what that, what that use will be. So, in our, in our opinion, I don't think this body gives up any authority as to what, you know, controlling authority over to the rest of that, the rest of that piece. Does that make sense? Any questions to that end? The other, I guess when I came back after our last meeting, one of the things that really resonated, and I'd commend Commissioner Bossmeyer, is a point that he made, and after we got out of here, I was thinking about it, and, and, you know, he, he made a point that the comp plan was a long process for a lot of people and a lot of input and a lot of, a long process, and he said, "I'm just not comfortable in, you know, listening to a 20-minute presentation and throwing that out the window." And I, I guess, after giving that some thought, it made a lot of sense that, you know, some time to contemplate, i.e. the last two weeks and things like that, does make a lot of sense. We appreciate, you know, the commission taking that time and thinking about it. As we, one of the concerns was that if we allowed Old Dominion to go in as an I-2 user, that we would then not have the opportunity to do anything C7-related on the balance of the property. I guess, when I think of this parcel of ground, one area that comes to mind that I think all of you can, can... all of you can, can envision with me is just as you come south out of Wichita, south of the interchanges and all that, you see Murphy Tractor sitting there, brand new facility, brand new office building. They've got all the John Deere, all their John Deere stuff out there. They've got their industrial use where they're doing service, their retailing, they've got their beautiful corporate office there. You've got that lawn and garden. You have that lawn and gar, or that lawn area along there. I mean, those are some uses that would absolutely apply here. Frankly, one of the, one of the previous clients that we've pitched this site to over the last 10 years that we were most excited about was the Carrico space or the Carrico project that ended up over in Ellsworth. I don't see that, them being deterred at all by, by what Old Dominion's going to build, which we'll get to that in the next step and kind of give you a sense of what's, you know, what their plans are and let you see what they, what they build around the country. But I think they're, I guess my point is, is to me, I-2 and a caliber of facility that , that Old Dominion's going to build in this area, if anything, it stands to be an excellent buffer between what we have now and the C-3 KDOT facility. When you go out there and that starts getting real rough, we're talking about ballast being stored, you know, outside and all of that kind of thing. So we see it as being a good planning mechanism to buffer from what exists now as the C-3 use in KDOT. And I don't know whether it's relevant at this time, but I'll mention it. But we did, I know in, in, in some of the comments that my notes that I took down from our last meeting, there were some concern given I-2 and the ability for the planning commission not having, we can't do a planned development I-2 within the community. And one of the big things that I heard being, that was a concern was the idea of gravel parking. Old Dominion paves everything, hard surfaces everything. In order to quell that concern here, we've done an amendment to the contract to covenant the fact that Old Dominion will not do any improvement, any improved area will be impermeable surface, be, be it concrete or, or asphalt. Don't know if that helps any of you at all, but it, it's what they intended to do. But in talking to Dean and his comments, to make sure that we're not, we're not rezoning for this client, we're rezoning for this use. And I know that, I mean, I wouldn't want, living in the community, I wouldn't want to see more of what we see in the KDOT facility going closer to the interchange either. So, can I answer any questions?
Gentlemen?
One of the comments that came out last time was the whole idea that as far as visibility for my 135 is it would be better not to see industrial type uses. So is there any good rationale why you didn't propose this on the west side of Yost Drive in your block two lots?
We proposed, we proposed this to, we proposed frankly, this project to them, not only within the Yost Drive, we, we tried to get them to consider going further, further west and they weren't interested. They liked the idea of having that, that, that interstate visibility because again, caliber, and I think we saw a few pictures, but I don't know if we got down into it. The caliber of facility that they build, you think of 435 or I-70 in Kansas City, you see a lot of this type of use along the interstate. They get the name recognition when they can. We showed them property all over the community and frankly, this is where their dollars are resonating.
Since there is some interest.
Admiral, this is the site plan or site survey of, of how the, the property would look. And, and this is the I-135 corridor here, so most of the improvements are going to be pushed up towards the, the Yost Drive side. So this, Jeff, could you describe what this area back here would consist of?
The plan, the plan currently is to improve the five acres. We talked about access and things like that as I've talked with Old Dominion and their real estate people. I can't tell you, it's, right now, it's on their, on their radar is future development to expand their terminal. But currently their needs based on what they have in this market in this region speaks to just needing to develop the five acres. So it's future use right now. It would, it would remain undeveloped immediately.
Back to the future generalized use of the, the whole idea of this being a part of the employment zone of the airport authority. Would you have any objection if we just made this cover block three, which is the west side of, of the creek? The lot two, block two, and then the subject site, 8.77, that leaves that a nice neat rectangle backing up to the I-3 down below. And it leaves the two north areas, the remaining north areas as PC-7 and as commercial potential.
I guess my question to the commission would be, I don't see, it's difficult for me to, to, to see the difference in what you, you still have the authority to say. If we came back and said, we've got another, we've got an I-2 user and we want to go, we want to take it into that top lot of block two or all the way up to the interchange, at that time, the commission could say, we're not interested in allowing that. I think you still maintain all the same authority. To answer your question, I, I guess I don't see that difference. But obviously, we've got a user today that is ready to go. They've got their plans, they're anxious to get through this process. So, I mean, in the name of getting it done, we're, we're listening.
Last time I made the motion to go ahead and like alternative two and, and approve the whole area as part of the airport employment area. So I just wanted to be sure that was still primarily your thinking.
That would be our preference. And frankly, and I think it could be argued after, after I made this statement, and I'm not as qualified as possible, or certainly not as qualified as my father, but growing up with a man that did business on the interstates all over the country, when you look at interchanges, the most preferable locations at any interchange is the right and the right. And you look at our comp plan use map and we've got the service commercial on, really on the wrong side and with the employment area on the right and the right. I mean, if, if we were to think through it and use typical interstate, real estate, 101, the most preferred location is that right and then the right off of that, right, the right and right out of that. So to me, given the fact that that's up there, again, I, I just don't see what the commission surrenders by making the whole thing employment area.
Any other questions of Mr. Mays? Thank you, sir. We'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this application? There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Joe?
If I may have a question, I think maybe of Dan since he's here. That, and I'm not that familiar, it's street widths for truck areas, but it's a 33-foot wide street. And, and we have a street up by Pacific Avenue that's constantly a problem because trucks park on both sides of it. And I assume that's a 30 foot, three-foot wide street.
That's correct.
So, and, and I know we've talked about that issue before. Would there be no parking on both sides of the, of Yost Avenue then? Or would we anticipate trucks being lined up on both sides of it?
Well, that's been a topic of discussion for that Pacific Court area. And we've allowed it on one side of the road. So one side seems to be something that the city can live with and the property owners are able to deal with. So that's what I would think would be the case here as well. And I don't know if Jeff can speak more to that, if they're planning on parking trucks on the road. Typically, that's not an Old Dominion practice, but I, he can maybe speak further to that.
We haven't had the, the specific conversation. I think speaking for the applicant, we would be okay if the city wanted to put no parking. It would have been, it would be news to me if they could. Because all of, typically, when you talk about this type of use, all of that.
Yeah.
Flo has to be contained onsite.
On their property.
You can't be using public right of way for any of that type of, type of stuff. So I, for the applicant, we would be okay if you did restrict it.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm certain that you would find them looking to circulate entirely on their own, on their own property.
Thank you.
Part of the problem on Pacific Court is that the business that's attempting to operate there doesn't have nearly enough land area for the business they're trying to operate by. Whereas this is 8.77 acres, so.
Well, Wayne, my thoughts. I wish that the property looked as good in person as it does via the air. And that'll, that'll help my decision or at least my facts and findings of my own self looking at this. Because I was the one who said an interchange is very important to any community. And my envision was seeing commercial development on that side. And so when I first got this brought to me, I was like, you know, I don't really know that that's a good use for. And then I spent some time out there and, and really nothing on the west side of Yost Drive, there's, I don't ever see any, I mean, with that, you can kind of see the large wires coming through there. So the first lot, very difficult to build on. The second one is the fill where that brown is in the back. The reason they're not farming that is if you didn't take time to go out there, that's drops off pretty significantly to some erosion. So that lot probably doesn't work out very well for anybody as well. I, I believe, given him some more thought of Jeff's comments, it is a good buffer between what's there. My vote the first time was to bring it all in. And my reasoning for that vote was again, we're still not losing any authority as the commission, but I want to give it for the chamber. I want to give it for the commercial guys out there to be able to say, look, I've got shovel ready and the commission has expressed a look at. I mean, I don't know that I want it there, but if the, if somebody came in tomorrow and said, we're going to build a manufacturing plant that hires 50 people and we're going to make nuts and bolts and washers, I think that's probably a pretty good deal for Salina to bring that, that factory there and it could be a good place for it. So I'm going to stick with my original one. It was kind of a unique vote last time. I didn't vote for just the eight acres because it didn't make sense. I wanted it to go, so I'm going, you know, I'm going to vote for either which one, whether it be the eight acres and or all of it, but I would, I would definitely support a motion for bringing it all in, knowing that we have not lost any authority if, if the powers that be bring something back in again.
Well, I agree with all of Todd's points and I'm in agreement with bringing it all in. I have a little different, maybe one slight perspective difference to add. And that is that I know there's some concerns about all the inputs that went into the comprehensive plan at a prior time, but, and although I try to approach all of these projects that come before us as to, I try to err on the side of the promoters because they're the ones that are doing things. But on, when it comes to issue like the comprehensive plan, I can't just simply say to myself, what's best for Salina? But we are a commission that's appointed as a advisory commission to the city commission. The mayor appointed us and the commission seated us. If they would have a problem with this change in the comprehensive plan, I, they're voted on, voted into their places by the citizens of Salina. So I think they'll be in a fine position to correct our decision if they don't feel it's, feel that it's right.
And in part, regardless of what direction you go, that's part of what we have done there on, on page six of your report. Part of any decision you make that we try to assist with is just to provide the reasons or basis of your decision. And, and some of the items that we pointed out on page six of this report is that this area does lie west of I-135. It does lie outside of the South Ninth Street corridor. It is, it could be viewed as a second tier interchange location if you view the northeast or in the southeast interchange locations as being the prime commercial ones. And if you go to the airport area economic hub map, it is, it is shown as, as part of that. And those are factors that we identified that you could base an amendment on. You may have some additional reasons, but part of what the city commission would look at is, is what the basis is for your advice or recommendation.
You know, this has been, this has been a tough decision for me too, because I, I honestly, I hate to give up corridors that can be developed commercial. But then again, I agree with what Todd has said about if we can bring in, if we can bring in some industry that will pay decent wages, there's a lot of advantage to that. The other concern I had last time is my vision of industry, I-2 is always all these gravel parking lots throwing up dirt everywhere. And I just hate that look, no matter where it's at. And, and I don't really like it on interchange. But with the fact that they're going to pave that certainly makes some sense to me. It'll be much more attractive and will allow some buffer between KDOT, which is not paved, which would be nice. But I, I will say that I believe that once we support this being changed in the planning, it'll, it'll probably eventually all be industrial in that quadrant of the intersection. So really, on that side of the interstate, on the west side of the interstate will likely be industrial at some point because I think that'll be the more likely development. But I too hope that if we do this, that it'll bring in jobs and that's what we truly need.
Question, Dean, is, is you go to Graves Truck Depot and it's all fenced in. Is that the decision? Is that going to be part of the covenant? So they have to fence it in with a six-foot wire fence on top hanging and all that? Or how are you going to be doing that? Is that, are you going to?
Well, we, we don't have, generally fencing like that is, is a security decision for the business. We, we have certain fence regulations as I interpret their site plan. And John, do you want to, I think it's slide seven and eight. This is the photograph of one of their recent facilities. I would imagine that for, for security reasons, this area is going to be fenced off because they're going to want to provide secure storage or secure places, both for their own vehicles and that. But their, their, how they would choose to fence for security or other reasons would be up to them and not dictated by the code unless you were on the next item to choose a, a planned development district option.
Be ready to make a motion, Commissioner.
Mr. Welsh, would you like to make a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion on M-12-13 for Planning Commission, alternative number two, recommend the future land use map. The, and Salina Conference will plan to be amended to show the entire Yost addition. Easter Eye Creek is a future employment area. Commission finds such map amendment justified for this action.
Second?
And I have just one question in reference to Ken's question, I guess. If any other industrial development came in, we would not have a guarantee that it would be paved rather than gravel. Is that correct?
That is correct. One of the items that we're going to be bringing you at your next meeting is, we were asked by the commission to do a, a survey of what other Kansas communities are requiring and what they deal with, with grandfathering and, and the language that will be coming to you. What we're finding in our research is that Salina is in a minority in terms of allowing gravel parking at all. And so that's what we'll be reporting back to you. But if you were to decide to make that change, then in the future, as industrial applications are done, that, that decision would also be in your court and the city commission's court in terms of changing the standard, which would apply citywide, not just here.
But as, but as per Mr. Mays' comments earlier, any application that came before, would still come before the commission and that could be a subject regardless of our.
Right. I'll, I'll lay out this scenario. The way that this is attempting to be addressed at this point is by a, a covenant, a deed covenant that requires the parking to be paved. That is how the airport authority deals with it. I guess I'll explain it this way. If El Dorado Bus or Salina Vortex wished to have gravel parking at their locations, the city would allow it. But the airport authority as the seller of the property to them disallowed it through enforceable deed covenants. It says if you purchase this and develop it, it will be with paving. If based on what we present to you at your next meeting, you want to recommend that the city abolish the ability to have unpaid parking in I-2 zoned areas, then that will take care of it for the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
For the purposes of this application, I would very say, may I? The entire 8.7 acres on the I-2 Yost, it will not, is not allowed to have anything but hard surface. And there's nothing else that's being implied for to be changed to I-2. So in this instance, there's nothing that can come before, there's nothing in the future that can be gravel surfaced unless it came back in front of you and we tried to rezone more than.
Jeff, you want to go to Mike? She's kind of pointing at.
She's kind of pointing at you back there.
Just reclarify that for us.
Say that again, if you will.
The entire 8.7 acres is been amended, the contract's been amended to, although they're only improving the five, any improvement in the future would have to be hard surface for the entire 8.7, not just for what they're doing today. And that's all that, that's, that's the applicant's only request, is that we would change the map, and then also we're going to follow with the I-2 zoning request. So it's just this parcel. C-7 wouldn't allow it anyway.
And then as we address the other three parcels, or C-7 now, if they come to us as I, we would have that option to ask, should we have you to, paving be part of that?
Provided that, as, as Mr. Andrew indicated, provided you didn't take action that would override any of that otherwise. But yes, that could absolutely be, we could continue that from a deed restriction standpoint.
Thank you. Other remarks? There's a move, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The I, the item carries.
So that was a unanimous recommendation?
That was unanimous, like those.
And Ken, you had the second on that motion, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Application number three, or item number three, application Z-12-25, also by the Ruth M. Yost Trust Number One, requesting a change in zoning district classification.
This is a companion application, and it is site-specific. The location is, two ways to look at it, the south 8.77 acres of a 19-acre lot, which is Lot 1, Block 1 of the Yost addition. Or another way to look at it, it is the south 435 feet of Lot 1, Block 1. And this entire area out here was 133 acres, and there were two vacant tracts of land. And basically, there was a encouraged marriage or partnership between KDOT and the Yost Trust. The Yost Trust owned the north parcel, KDOT had the south parcel, and they jointly requested annexation of the property and approval of a plat and rezoning. And this all occurred in 2002. And there were no specific uses that were proposed for the Yost property. There was the KDOT maintenance facility proposed at the, for the southern tract. And so in September 2002, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of Plan C-7 and I-2 zoning for the Yost tract, I-3 zoning for the KDOT tract, and approved a plat for the property. We've highlighted for you on, on page two, some of the, the bullet points there that development on Lot 1, Block 1 be limited to the C-7 uses, which we've included in the packet for you, and also including warehousing. And that a final site plan come forward to the Planning Commission prior to any development occurring on Lot 1, Block 1, or lots one and two of Block 2. And the reason, these, these were the reasons that the Planning Commission gave at the time. They said that because of the interstate access created by the interchange and the plan to relocate the city's 24-inch water line, the land adjacent to the interchange is suitable for some form of highway commercial development. As you move away from the interstate, the land is more suitable for industrial development. As the 133 acres lies between the South Ninth Street corridor on the east and the airport industrial center on the west, they felt that Plan C-7 zoning adjacent to the interchange would be compatible with future development at the northeast and southeast corners of the interchange. You, you have decided today that you're willing to look at the north, or rather, the southwest quadrant, consistent with the northwest quadrant, which is shown as employment center. So staff at the development review team met with Mr. Mayes and Adam Maher, who is with First Construction, working on behalf of Old Dominion. We determined that their use was a truck terminal or a motor freight terminal, which under Salina's zoning code is an I-2 use. And we've highlighted for you the difference between a warehouse and a distribution center. And there's a tendency for warehouses or distribution centers to be quite large, and they are used primarily for storage with relatively infrequent loading and unloading and trips, whereas truck terminals have a much smaller storage area and their trip frequency is much higher with more trucks and more unloading base than you would have at a typical warehouse, but a building footprint that is much smaller. So we're talking about 8.77 acres of ground. We're talking about a building or facility that is roughly 7,800 square foot, footprint. And so we've indicated that this is a request for I-2 zoning that would cover 8.77 acres. If this were approved, it would allow truck terminals or motor freight terminals, but also other uses. So we've highlighted for you that the paved parking and front landscape, front yard landscaping are optional or voluntary in the I-2 district, whereas they are required in commercial zoning districts. So we don't have a planned industrial district like we do planned commercial districts. We do have planned development districts. What we pointed out in our report, and it's how much confidence you want to put in that, is that why does Salina Vortex and some of those facilities look like they do? It's not because of the city zoning regulations, it's because of separate covenants that the Salina Airport Authority and the Salina Economic Development Corporation have used. And so one question that we would point out is that those covenants are generally between the seller and the buyer, and the buyer takes, subject to those covenants, and they run with the land. The city is a, a third party to that. We don't have enforcement powers on those covenants at the airport authority or at the Salina Economic Development Corporation. There may be an option for that, that the city attorney could assist us with, but wanted to make clear that these are covenants between buyer and seller, and they are enforceable by the seller. And usually, just like in a residential development, it's because they want to maintain a certain look or standard. So if I'm a residential developer and I have covenants in my subdivision, I'm going to want to see those enforced, because I want to maintain a certain standard in that subdivision. It's the same case here. It's the developer or seller who's enforcing that covenant. There is an option for the, perhaps for the city to be involved, but the way as it's set up, we would not be a party to those. In terms of the suitability of this property to develop, there's no flood plain on this side of the Yost Drive. We've got water sewer and a paved street. So as we discussed previously, the applicant and the owner believe that the Plan C-7 zoning on the south 8.77 acres inhibits the marketability and future development of the property, thus the request for I-2. In terms of the character of the neighborhood, you really addressed that in item two. And so we are looking at this as whether you believe this would be, I-2 zoning would be incompatible with this location. We've highlighted information about the water, the sewer, the cost recovery aspects. The plan here was for stormwater runoff and the need for detention to be addressed on a lot-by-lot basis. There's a large storm sewer at the south end of Yost Drive, which may be more than adequate to serve this 8.77 acres. It would drain the site west over to West Dry Creek. One of the questions we had, we've indicated there, this is a 60-foot right-of-way, 33 feet of paving. There's no traffic today, except for the KDOT maintenance facility. What we have pointed out is that a truck terminal, while it would have truck traffic, would generate less traffic than a truck stop or travel plaza in the same location. So if you were looking at trips at the Yost Drive Waterwell Interchange, or at the intersection there, and truck-related trips, Mr. Stack and I came up with an estimate that even a modest-sized travel plaza would generate about 10 times more vehicle trip traffic than a truck terminal. So depending on the number of fuel islands or dispensing items. So will, will it increase truck traffic? We estimate that this would generate, could generate anywhere from 70 to 140 trips a day. But if you're looking at a travel plaza, you're looking at 1,200 to 2,400 trips a day. So yes, it would increase truck traffic, but relatively less than what you would have with a actual travel plaza or truck stop. So what, what we pointed out to you is that this case presents a question whether you view this south 8.77 acres as a location for businesses catering to interstate travelers or as a second-tier or secondary location. And the primary concern that staff would have is not about the use per se, but it's, it's the compatibility of the development standards. Where C-7 requires paved parking, paved access drives, front yard landscaping, and some middle of plans that are binding on the applicant, the I-2 zoning requires none of these. Possible findings that could be made, we have indicated that Lot 1, Block 1 has remained vacant as currently zoned for 10 years. It's a secondary or second-tier location, not the prime interchange location. As you move away from the interchange, land becomes more suitable for industrial-type uses. It's adjacent to I-3 zoning on the south. You can decide for yourselves whether a truck terminal could be compatible with a future C-7 travel-related use on the remaining 11 acres to the north. Certainly, we have needed public utilities and a paved street in place. And as we discussed in item two, this is a transition area between South Ninth Commercial Corridor and the airport employment area. So if you were in agreement with those findings, a motion should be made to recommend approval of the requested zoning change from PC-7 to I-2 on the south 8.77 acres. And again, if this is, is, as we look at these questions, and it's something you want to see, certainly, there's two ways to deal with this in the future. One is to create what we would call a planned industrial district that would allow you to attach conditions like you did at your last meeting on the signs on South Ohio. We don't presently have that available. The other way to address that is to simply beef up the development standards for the I-2 district as it relates to parking lots and paving. But what I wanted to point out was that if, if you were looking, if this were Plan C-7 and you were looking at a travel plaza or a hotel on this site, and you were approving the zoning, the site plan that was submitted would be binding on the applicant, and they couldn't do something different without coming back to you with that change. In this case, you're approving I-2 zoning for the site, and that allows whatever I-2 allows. It could allow a use different than Old Dominion trucking, if that were to all fall through. The alternative to that would be a zoning change from Plan C-7 to a planned development district for a truck, truck terminal. And that, that would allow two things. It would allow you to attach the site plan to the zoning change and would not allow other uses without a PDD amendment. So where that leaves you is if, if you recommend approval of I-2 zoning, then you're relying on the deed covenants and the assurances that Old Dominion will be the user of the property and will be developed to that standard. If you chose to rezone it from Plan C-7 to a planned development district, then you could attach conditions to that, or you could say that development of the property must conform to the plan that was submitted and that the use that you're approving is not all I-2 uses, but a, a truck terminal, and that would not allow other I-2 uses without a planned development district amendment. So those are the options that are available, is Plan C-7 to I-2 or Plan C-7 to a planned development district. And the findings that we indicated would support either of those decisions.
Thank you, Dean. Questions of staff?
Dean, on the landscape, if, if I-2 does not require it now, what zoning or how is it determined? Is it number of plants per square feet? How, how would we do that if we wanted to put something on there that said that it has to be done?
Well, I, again, and I'm not, I'm going to ask Mr. Mayes or Mr. Ritz to go back and do that again, but I'll, I'll just read to you. This is a, this is a deed from the Salina Economic Development Corporation to Crestwood Incorporated. And it's, it's a deed for property out there on Waterwell Road on the north side. And as part of the deed, it says, more specifically, Crestwood Incorporated and all subsequent owners shall install and maintain reasonable and appropriate landscaping for any facilities located on real estate. If this was a commercial district and not an industrial district, we would look at the frontage of the lot on Yost Drive, and we would look at the depth of the lot, and basically, they would have to provide approximately 20 square feet of front yard landscaping along Yost Drive for every lineal foot of frontage that they have. But again, the, the distinction between a planned development district and a straight I-2 is that in I-2, we can enforce what I-2 requires. The seller can enforce whatever stipulations or covenants they want on the buyer. The planned development district allows us to have conditions or performance standards that are over and above what the I-2 would require. And it also can allow you to say, we're approving this for a truck terminal, but not for any other of the long list of I-2 uses. So that's, that's the primary distinction. But if you have straight I-2 zoning, then you're relying on the covenants and any relations between the buyer and the seller to ensure how the site is developed. If you have a planned development district, then you can apply your own conditions as far as paving, landscaping, and limitations on uses.
How's that done? Through an occupancy certificate? I mean, you don't let them occupy it until, in a planned development, until they've met the criteria, and that's how you're going to control it?
Yes. You can consult Mr. Kennedy about that on his maintenance facility out there. Part of, his certificate of occupancy deals with landscaping.
And they let you send them a check if you can't plant it to a string, too.
I understand.
So yes, what that would do is you have a, you have a landscape plan, you have areas that are supposed to be paved. We go out and inspect. When we confirm that the paving is there and the landscaping is complete, then you get your certificate of occupancy.
Otherwise, you shut the water and the sewer off and they can't, they just don't get on it, huh? I get you.
Right. It's same thing that's going on right now with the Olive Garden site on South Ninth Street. We're out there checking, confirming the landscaping's complete, the paving, parking is all there, and when they have all that complete, they're ready to occupy.
Shall we hear from the applicant? The applicant like to address this application. Shall we hear from the applicant? The applicant like to address this application?
Thank you again. As usual, the staff report, very comprehensive. One thing that I would point out that I heard in the staff report, the PC-7 zoning, it wasn't something that the planning commission, they agreed with the applicant as, when we were plotting it. We had visions at that time of Truck Stop and this, and we learned later, again, through our local resources that are more familiar, that Truck Stop wasn't going to be feasible there, given the other users in the air, so on and so forth. So when I heard Mr. Andrews say that, I wouldn't say that we were so much overturning what a previous commission had designated it as, but they just simply agreed to give us what we asked for. Is that fair, Dean?
Right. The, I was just giving the reasons for why it was zone Plan C-7 initially and what the process was.
That was by way of request by the applicant. I mean, I guess at this point, I'd just be happy to stand for questions.
I presume that you want to keep the I-2 designation. Seems that the city's concerned about down the road and the landscaping and the paving issues. You addressed the paving issue. I assume you have good incentive to help the truck company along in making the property look nice because you want to also sell the property in front. So would you want to address our worries about how those things will be coped with?
The specific to Old Dominion, they are truly, if you look in the trucking and the terminal world and some of those publications, they are kind of the class group. They do what they say they're going to do. They build quality facilities. They do all the things that you can see. I mean, there's a, I mean, you can see all the landscaping that's there. That's a brand-new facility, so it's not matured, and so on and so forth. But we have very little concern about the quality of what they're going to build. Going forward, I guess we would be interested in that as well. We need to take our steps a little further with them. By way of, we amended the contract. Now we need to, all that will need to be recorded, et cetera, once they close, relative to the gravel parking and all that. The contract's amended, but we need to do that work yet. So we can incorporate some landscaping. I don't know that going to the extent in an industrial use of landscaping, that you go from zero of I-2 all the way up to what would be expected for a high-impact commercial landscaping scenario. I mean, I would think there might be some happy medium there. I mean, for my chair, I would think that something maybe a little less than the high-impact retail would be appropriate for an industrial user.
So is that half? If he's saying 20 square feet per lineal foot is 10%?
And I'm going to, I'm going to, can I ask staff a question here real quick? Is landscaping called out on the site plan? I know they've got yard area and all of that designated, but have they designated trees and all that? I have to apologize. I've not looked at the site plan close enough.
I don't, it was when we discussed it with Mr. Maher, and he indicated that most of their other facilities had some front yard landscaping. But when we had that discussion, we were still discussing it in context of this being zone C-7.
Feasibility.
Yes. I think the area is potentially available. All this, this is their property line, this is their proposed paving, all this is potentially available for that. The question is simply how you get there. And I guess that's what I'm trying to reiterate, which is a judgment call for you all. But the I-2 zoning would not be truck terminal or Old Dominion-specific. And again, the way that would be addressed is, the reason Salina Vortex looks the way it does is that the Airport Authority required that it looked the way that does as part of their deed covenants. It wasn't because the I-2 zoning or I-3 zoning required it. So the I-2 zoning would not be truck terminal or Old Dominion-specific. A planned development district could be truck terminal or Old Dominion-specific. But the other way to get there and the way it's been addressed in some other settings is that the seller prepares a deed for the buyer, and the deed requires as a condition of purchase that the buyer develop the property to a certain standard.
So you don't have anything in there now, though, in your deed? Is that correct?
All we've got covered is gravel. Now, what I would say is, I mean, in listening to what Mr. Andrew read relative to the Salina Economic and the Crestwood deal, Salina Economic Development Corporation, I mean, we would be okay with following that and recording it and making this rezoning contingent upon the recording of that document, if that makes the commission comfortable.
Well, I don't want to get, I mean, again, speaking for myself, I don't want to get crazy on it, but I don't know whether it's 10 linear feet or whether it's, I mean, I'm trying to think of five acres. I mean, is it six trees and 20 bushes? You know what I mean?
And I guess what I heard read there was reasonable and is what the Salina Economic Development Corporation did with Crestwood, stating that we are going to have some front yard and we are going to have some landscaping. This isn't going to be a problem for specifically Old Dominion because they're going to do it anyway. If this were to fall apart, then we still have this document. The I-2's contingent upon the recording of that. I think we could all live with that if that makes the commission, gives the commission a level of comfort.
In the case of the Airport Authority and in the case of the Salina Economic Development Corporation, this covenant says that the Crestwood Incorporated must obtain advance approval from the Salina Economic Development Corporation Board of their architectural and landscaping plans. And so I think you're familiar with residential subdivisions that a builder has to have their plans approved by an architectural review committee or by the developer before they build. In the case of the Airport Authority, the Airport Authority Board has to review and approve the plans for the developers of property in that area. If you left it to that, you would basically be saying that the, we would have a covenant that we could review, but essentially, the representatives of the Yost Trust would be approving the architectural and landscaping plans, but that the covenant would require that they have to have some landscaping plan, that they couldn't just not have landscaping.
I think Chairman Ryan made a legitimate point in stating that we've got a, given the fact that we have all that, the balance of this property to develop, we've got a pretty high level of motivation to make sure this facility looks good.
And you're okay with that statement of reasonable landscaping? I know, I don't wish to get into determining how much.
Agreed. And then that comes back to, that comes back to the owners, the trust.
And I have some, I have a little bit of personal concern about too much landscaping in certain places because I look at the river that we all rely on for water, and some of the landscaping we're using in Salina right now is pretty water-intensive, and that's not necessarily good in times of drought. So reasonable landscaping makes sense to me, and you have a vested interest in making it look right. Because if it doesn't, it's going to affect the values of the rest of the property. If you let it go to pieces, somebody will be able to buy it cheap and develop it another way then. So I'm fine with I-2 and letting, the paving was a big thing, and I think, Dean, that we need to do whatever is necessary to work towards getting I-2 paving requirements throughout any future developments, too.
Yes, and that'll be on your next agenda.
So for clarity's sake and maybe by way of the motion, is that to say that the I-2 zoning will be contingent upon the recording of this deed restriction?
Of deed covenants that would address paving and landscaping.
And we'll work with you on that language, or I can get that stuff.
So I'd make a motion that, quick question. Does this, is this I-2 zoning subject, can it be subject specific to Old Dominion? I mean, we've had some, shown concern about Old Dominion maybe falling apart?
No.
Can you be subject, can it be, you know, subject to being PC-7 if Old Dominion doesn't purchase it? Can you make it, the zoning subject to that?
I don't mean to, I, and maybe I've, and I've led, maybe I've led you down a wrong path. Mr. Andrew gave me an example of another scenario where the Planning Commission Act acted based on a local owner, developer, and they rezoned based on knowing that they were going to do it, and then they ended up selling the property. Old Dominion, this isn't going anywhere. I mean, they are anxiously awaiting these responses because they're ready to go. I mean, this deal isn't falling apart, provided they can get the appropriate zoning. I mean, they're ready to go. So I didn't mean, if I implied that in any way, I certainly misled because that's certainly not the case.
But no, you can't make this zoning revocable based on purchase or not. We're simply telling you that you have to look at this property and decide that it's, I-2 zoning is appropriate. And so the I-2 zoning is not truck terminal or Old Dominion-specific. It's saying that this property is appropriate to be zoned I-2.
And we're trusting you, otherwise.
It's happened before.
He's going to come up and find us many times.
Again, yeah.
Are there other questions, Mr. Mace? Shall we let the public have a chance on this one?
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this application?
[inaudible]
There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there more discussion on this item or is there a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we approve Z-12-25 to change from PC-7 to I-2 based on the understanding and the outlined advantages that Dean had mentioned earlier. If those are necessary to be in the motion, we can include those. And also, I would like for the record to show that the owner has agreed to pave the parcel as it's developed. And landscaping will be reasonable for the site.
And we concur with the staff findings?
Yes, that's correct.
The four recommended.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
So that would be 20 linear feet of saguaro cactus or 10 linear feet of cotton wood?
Anything you can eat.
Or a lot of the new to grass. It doesn't take much water, but looks good sometimes.
Yeah, but we need trees, Ken. We need trees.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the item carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Since we have now modified our landscaping list to include a zero escaping list, so we do have a list of drought-tolerant Kansas-appropriate plantings that we encourage throughout the community.
Who are?
For other matters, we will meet on the 19th. And the two items that we'll have are an application to, I'll say, reestablish because we had one there in the early part of the, between around 2003 and '04, a outdoor, open-air flea market at 1615 North 9th Street where there's a thrift shop today. And the second item will be our report back to you on paved parking, or parking lot standards. And so what we'll basically do is we'll get you a table or matrix. We've, I think, chosen a dozen or so Kansas communities will summarize how they address residential, how they address commercial, how they address industrial, how they address grandfathering. But I think the, as I noted in our research, we are, the majority of the communities didn't work hard enough in their ordinances to address grandfathering. About half of them did. It's one thing to have a standard in your code, but you need to specifically address how you're going to deal with gravel that you already have. And then our conclusion is that we are in a minority as far as communities that allow I-2 uses to have gravel parking.
And while we're at it, while we're talking about dirt and gravel, Schilling Road running east of Ohio that has the sand pits on it is a terrible mess with dirt all over the community. Is there any way to address that? I mean, do we have any ability at this table to talk about that, or is that out of our hands?
That road is under the county's maintenance and jurisdiction. And as Stone Lake would develop farther east and perhaps have a connection point, we've also talked to, there's been some discussion about the southeast corner as well. But it's basically, it's going to be tied to any development east of Ohio that is not a sand pit.
See, the city could annex that, though.
What's the link for the sand pit? What's the line for that sand pit?
The sand pit where Stone Lake is, is basically played out. The other sand pit is basically played out. And Mr. Johnson has moved his operation to the other side of the levee. So other than some occasional trips from the sand pits, all SOP is phasing out, and most of the traffic there is going to the sand pit that's on the other side of the levee.
That recently happened?
That sand pit?
No, I mean the traffic converting to some other, because a lot of trucks on that road, it lasts on my look, so.
Yes. Almost all the traffic on that road is sand and gravel trucks. There's no other reason.
So they're still hauling out that pit?
Yes.
Dean, is Holmes from Magnolia the country club? Is that, well, yeah, country club, is that also in the county? Is that the id?
Yes. And we're having ongoing discussions with them. They would like the city to take on maintenance of more and more and more and more roads.
It's a dangerous road now between Magnolia and Crawford.
Yes, it's carrying more traffic. But that is also a county-owned and maintained road at the present time. And most of those improvements are development-driven. So as you would, as we grow out to the east and we get subdivisions that wish to connect to Holmes Road, that's going to trigger paving or improvements to that. But short of that, the city is not going to go out and just start paving roads.
Dean, to come back to the I-2 zoning issues, you mentioned grandfathering. Am I, and we may have this discussion next time, but if we required block top within that new zoning, would that allow grandfathering and not?
We have grandfathering presently, but a lot of that, in our commercial districts, we require paved parking. But we have, I will, I will give you an example because we went out and did an inspection today. There was a permit to create a snow cone business at the corner of Pacific and Santa Fe. That's zone C-5, commercial. The C-5 district requires paved parking. However, that had a pre-existing gravel parking area that had been there for 50 years. The way the ordinance is structured now, as long as they continue to use it the same way it's been used historically, they can continue to maintain. Just because they put a business in there, doesn't trigger that they pave it. That grandfathering could go away. But my example is, you know, is how you enforce it, how you go back retroactively, what triggers it. My example, which I live with personally, is my parents live in a home that was built in 1912. It has a gravel driveway. Well, it had a gravel driveway in 1912, and it was in the country. The city came into existence in 1941. In 1990 sometime, they passed an ordinance that said all residential driveways must be paved. That house still has a gravel driveway. What is the trigger that's, just because you pass an ordinance, does that mean that everybody who's had something in existence for 50 years has to, and what's your authority to enforce that? Because the owner of that hasn't done anything. They're not using it any differently. They're not changing the use. How do you just run out there and make everybody? So what happened was, in the late '80s, we didn't have a paving requirement. You could do a Dillon store and have a gravel parking lot. So the planning commission passed an ordinance change that required commercial and churches and others to have paved parking lots. But neither staff nor the commission thought about all the existing ones. And so then after that passed, all the people who owned property in Salina that had existing gravel parking lots filled up this gravel parking lots filled up this room and wanted to know what was gonna happen with that. So then the ordinance was amended to grandfather in gravel lots. And so the, that was because it wasn't thought of in the first place. Well, when we bring our report back to you next week, we'll report to you on what's grandfathered and what currently triggers having to take a gravel lot and pave it, and you can decide whether that needs to be changed as well. But, but-
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, I mean, you could pass, an ordinance could be passed that said, every driveway in Salina must be paved. Then you still have to sit down and figure out, well, what's gonna happen with all the ones that we have already that aren't paved.
The trigger'd probably be if they changed something, like put, tear a building down, put a new garage up.
Right.
You'd have a trigger, the, well, if you put a new garage up, you have to pave the park-
We'll explain to you what the current triggers are, and maybe they're not strong enough. Maybe there should be more things that trigger that existing gravel get paved, but we'll flesh all that out for you. But the first thing that we were asked to do by the commission was, what are the standards that our other peer communities in Kansas have, and we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds like a lot of fun.
And the clever tricks they use to get around or segue those things against each other.
Right, and so-
Are you ready for a motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned.
We're adjourned?
You're gonna declare that?